Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome participants to the joint planning board meeting, Ivory Planning Board Meeting of September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. First item is a call to order. Ms. Creighton.
Yeah.
Stelicio.
Yeah.
It's Bowling.
Yeah.
Rowney.
Silver.
Here.
Kenny is not joining us tonight. Thank you. Looks like we have a forum tonight. I'd like to remind all board members, guests to ask to be recognized by the chair. If you wish to speak. This meeting is being recorded. The item on the agenda is the acknowledgement procedure of correspondence. Three letters from Lorraine Iavoni, nine eleven, nine sixteen, and nine eighteen. At this time, I'd like to allow any public comments with items that are not on the agenda. Anybody from the public would like to speak? Okay, so first item on the agenda is a a pre-meeting informational presentation by Tony Mark Glofski and site manager Peter Gudde to review the self signaling technologies, revise schedule for the application through the planning board. Betsy, any opening remarks? Got talent.
Um, I have not heard from them since we set this up. So, um, as I understand it, and as I put in my staff memo, a determination was made that they may need a variance for height because they're attaching the parking garage to the main buildings. So I will let Mark Glofski and others explain.
Hey, Mark. Floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Kenny Hall. I'm here tonight with representatives from our team, Peter Gudde, as you mentioned earlier, Peter Mudo and Craig Thompson from CST, Charlie Ware, who is providing engineering services from Hancock, Greg Keller from Columbia Construction, who's providing project management, and Samir Sruchi, who is our architect. And before we get going with respect to the item that was just mentioned by Betsy, what we've been trying to do with you since we first came to the planning board is keep you abreast as you asked, and as time has gone by. We've had the good fortune of being slowed down a little bit by issues with the zoning by law, but that's not monumental at this point. We've got more important things that are on the table. Before we get into the building height and construction issues, it would probably be appropriate for Peter to give the planning board an update with respect to a few matters that have been addressed since we were last before you.
Mr. Chairman. Can I just ask, Mr. Glofski quit sit, so he says that was back to Mary.
Oh, I was doing that so that ultimately I could see the screen.
Well, that's okay. It doesn't count.
Somebody sit next to me.
Like that, I'm not trying.
I was, I was, I was thinking. Okay.
No, it is. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. So I just have two very quick updates. When we were here for one of the earlier meetings, we were talking about, we in the board were talking about the environmental side of the site, and one of the board members asked whether we would have an ecologist as a part of the team. I think that CST heard that request and thought it was a great idea, and they have subsequently engaged a company called Biohabitats out of Baltimore, Maryland, who are experts in this field, and they are now an integral part of the design team, working with the landscape architect, working with HGA and others to ensure that the species that exist on site are protected and cared for, the native flora and fauna that might have an opportunity to be reintroduced can be, and that we're coordinating with particularly the trustees are butters so that any ideas with regard to, you know, wildlife and that kind of thing can be coordinated with other landowners. So that was just, I think, an update as to a response or a request and one that I think is going to provide some interesting results. The second is, I'm sure you all know that we, a project of this size goes through what's called the MEPA process, and MEPA is the, is an opportunity for all state agencies to have a look at a project early in its conception, and they have an opportunity to provide feedback. So we have now successfully completed that process. It can be a one-step process or a two-step process. In our case, it was a one-step process. We submitted an ENF, and the secretary determined that that was adequate. We had a site visit with multiple state agencies. All the state agencies were invited. Several members of this board and Betsy were there, and within, within the certificate that we received, there are some recommendations for mitigation. The only, the only mitigation of substance are some traffic-related items, and they're all enumerated in this. This is a publicly available document, and I'm happy to provide a link. I think you were, you've, you've got a link originally, but happy to provide it again, but most of the mitigation is, is modest in nature in terms of some bike, some bike and pedestrian inclusion, some commuter rail and some accessibility to commuter rail and that sort of thing, and the possibility of a future light at the end of the northbound off ramp on School Street. So those are the big mitigation items.
Street light? Street light? About a street light?
Street light, yeah. Traffic signal.
A traffic signal?
Yeah. Happy to take questions, but that was my update.
Thanks, Peter. Any questions from the board first, and then? Okay.
As we previously explained to the board, the team decided that after studying the site and getting through due diligence, that the most appropriate location for constructing the building on the property was the scarred, disturbed area of the site, and that it would be appropriate to avoid disturbing, to any great extent, the previously undisturbed portions of the site. And it was also determined that rather than having a couple acres of parking, as we explained before, structured parking would make more sense, and consequently, after having made those decisions and applying the the requirements for the project to that area of the site, it was determined that there were some unexpected challenges, and Samir has been dealing with those challenges in an effort to provide the town what the town wants and to provide self signaling with what self signaling wants. To accomplish all that, it means that the building is more expensive and it doesn't give self signaling everything it would have wanted in an ideal situation, and the ideal situation would have been to put the building on the upper portion of the property, which is the undisturbed area. We wouldn't be talking about height variances. We wouldn't be talking about anything that required relief from the board. However, that would have been totally inconsistent with what this board and town wanted. So we have pursued designing a building on that portion of the property that I alluded to, and under the circumstances, because of the topography and the nature of the building and the connection to the garage, it was impossible to do that using, applying the definition of building height, which is looking at pre-construction grade every twenty feet around the perimeter of the building. So what we are proposing, and what we're going to talk to the zoning board about, is modifying the definition so that, like some other communities, the height definition would apply to the front of the building, and that's the portion of building facing one twenty eight position. So Samir will explain to you what the limitations were and how he's responded to.
So a lot of this is hard to imagine, but we do have some visuals that will help. I will start by actually showing. And someone is unable to share.
Yeah.
My name is Samir Sruchi, HGA. I'll see you logged in. I'm logged in. I am. Ah, okay. Good. Can I check?
Should be able to.
Yep. Great. Thank you. Last time we were here in February, we showed this kind of animation that focuses on the very important message from CST relaying the town's desire not to be seen from one twenty eight. It's basically the development to be discreet behind the trees. And we did this animation to show how the garage and the buildings beyond are sitting in the low parts of the development, the disturbed parts. And as you go down with the camera angle from seeing it, here's the kind of the building phase one and two, the garage in the background. And we wanted to convince ourselves and you that we actually want to see the development from one twenty eight, whether heading east or west, north. And by doing that, that we developed a the master plan. Just a reminder of what we used last time to illustrate the development and comes in a master plan. And this is the site with this being kind of a cliff that is forty five feet, forty to forty five feet high. The northern part is the disturbed quarry bottom, as we call it. And then the garage right here is also sitting in a disturbed part that is also part of the quarry area that they were digging up, granite. The current site plan looks like this, slightly modified from what we presented last time, but it's pretty much the same thing. There's a phase one that includes a lobby and a phase two right here. This portion right here, if you see my cursor, is where the cliff drops off the forty feet. The garage is also planned in two phases, and as Mark noted, that we're linking the garage to the building. The investment that CST decided to do, again, you know, in lieu of doing a lot of surface parking is to make it even more convenient, attract people to come back easier so they less of them won't work at home, right, Craig? So the the current design is developed a bit more than what you saw before. We're still developing design. We're beginning of design development phase. And as you can see, we're straddling the cliffs and building a lot of the square footage at the lower parts. As we kind of settled on a master plan that does that, here's a section that indicates the portions, like three floors are under that cliff height, and only two sit on the, what we call the upper meadow, and that's the reason for keeping that low is the visibility from one twenty eight. And yet again, we were kind of looking at the terrain and how it impacts visibility. For people that don't know, this is, this is the site. This is what we're calling the cliff. And that's the quarry bottom, and that's what we are referencing as the upper meadow, the undisturbed part of it. So what we, where we hit the challenge is when we took the average grade definition in the bylaws that says you should calculate the perimeter of the building, and in consultation with the building inspector, he said that should include the garage because that's how it's written. So by taking all of these perimeters, specifically in the low area, our average grade height dropped so that we cannot be in compliance on the upper level. So in a sense, we're trying to meet the intent of the bylaw, and by doing that in a diligent way, we're penalized by not being able to have the two floors, or at least not be compliant. And I can zoom into. So this is the southern elevation with the relationship of the garage. As you can see, the garage sitting in a dip, a natural dip within the site. The dashed red line across it, right here, is the grade of the road shown around it on the south side. Right here, the road is going from the high ground and sloping down, hiding it even more again from one twenty eight. So getting to the height average grade of ninety eight point ten and using the allowable fifty five plus fifteen for the building, basically, we are non-compliant, as you can see, by two feet, five inches on the building, and for the mechanical room up on top, we're still, we're also non-compliant by four feet, five inches. And that's our challenge, and that's when we realized we need to kind of think about what is the best way to kind of be able to do that. We think the intent of the bylaws are being addressed as we're trying to illustrate by building more of the amplers in lower areas. And as Mark said, we thought comparing the bylaws to other towns, neighboring towns, that it is common to see that the definition of average grade is relevant to the the front elevation or the main entrance elevation of the building. And we are proposing that that would actually help us do that, that help us meet and be compliant. What you see in blue is what we are saying is the southern face of the whole complex, phase one and phase two. And if we do, if we use that, that would allow us to be compliant on the roof right here and compliant with the fifteen feet for the mechanical apparatus on the roof. So that's why, when we came to get your advice on the thoughts on this approach.
There are a number of different ways to approach this, and obviously we were all on the same page, and we tried to make modifications or modifications from major bylaw that would enable an appropriate three-story lab and we anticipated when that was done without really applying it to this weird site that that would work, and if this were a normal piece of property, it would work. The height definition in the zoning bylaw works for ninety nine percent of the buildings that would be built in Manchester. They're mostly single-family homes, but when you look at a building that's, oh, I don't know how long this is from stem to stern, including the garage, but when you look at the, the length of the building and the significant change in topography, it makes it virtually impossible for us to do this with the current definition. Alternatively, as we, I've said before, the building could be put in a different location, and we wouldn't need this relief at all. So we didn't want to apply to the zoning board, Brian, with, without explaining to you how we got to this point. If somebody can suggest a better approach, we'd certainly be willing to consider it. But at this point, we think that we can make a presentation to the zoning board that would be consistent with the requirements for obtaining a variance under these circumstances. And ultimately, what we're proposing to do is design to be consistent with the purposes of the zoning by law.
What's the height of each floor?
Fifteen feet floor to floor for the lab building. The mechanical systems are usually quite robust. So you, you need the height. It is what to make it a building that lasts and sustainable over its life. Yes, that's what we recommend about lab.
Questions from the board or comments?
This is for the building and not the garage? Is the garage a separate issue?
No, the garage, because of its connection to the building, is counted as building.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not like an accessory building or a detached structure. So when, when suddenly we went from two acres of surface parking to structured parking and connected it, it changed the equation dramatically.
Okay, so it's the same issue across all the buildings?
Yes. The, when we consulted with Paul about how should we calculate it, he said garage is attached, and the bylaws is you have to.
We, we, we tried to avoid this with a meeting with Paul Orlando. And I think Paul was correct that it, it would not have been possible for him to take the position that the garage is not part of the building. The, the interesting thing, I think, is, is the way that the quote-unquote base elevation is determined. That's what's causing us the problem. If we had taken our entire project and put it on the high side of that ledge, we would, we would easily meet height requirements. But in our effort to, to camouflage the building from one twenty eight, we've pushed it down over the edge of the cliff. And because that's forty feet lower, you take the average elevation of that lower area, and then that gives you the base elevation. So by that base elevation, it calculates for our building to be taller. The same way with the, with the garage. The garage is in the lower area. If we took the garage and moved it up on the hill, we'd be, we'd be at the sounding. So it's, it's a little counterintuitive. You think that, well, by pushing things into the lower areas and helping to camouflage from one twenty eight, which is the intent, that that would be a good thing. But in terms of the building height, it does the opposite. It makes the base elevation lower, and then the exact same building with that lower base elevation. Like, if we detached, the garage was detached, or if we didn't have the garage, the base elevation would be much higher because the base is, is in that lower area, and the calculation is the average every twenty five feet around. So it's actually the introduction of the garage into the design that's driving the base down and then making the, the height of the building higher, even though it's, you know, without the garage, the base elevation is much higher and it's the same building. So it's a. And there's some built-in compromises that are being made. For instance, if you look at phase one, facing one twenty eight, it's essentially a two-story building. And so space is lost there. So it, it's it's a very challenging situation.
Chris?
Is it fair to say that you didn't really change the height of the building? You're just trying to calculate.
Exactly.
How you're going with the zone. So it's not a change in design, it's a change in interpretation.
Correct, correct.
So my understanding is we changed this language about a year, the way we did the reclassification. So is there simple language that you can propose? We're apparently going to have a November thirteenth meeting. Is there language that we can change? To me, I, I'm not crazy about a variance. Is there language that we can change for the LCD that would simply make this at the November thirteenth better for your project?
I haven't thought about that. I don't know whether.
I mean, it, it could be simply the, the actual dimension.
We calculated this different a year ago, so.
So the, exactly, the fifty five came from an abstract site, and I think this at the time of the variance discussions. So this is a very specific site that has this challenge, and we're trying to kind of design to the nature of the site. But if your question is, what's the simple request that you change instead of fifty five, we would ask for X, which I don't, we're not ready to do, that is more, but.
To me, I'd rather see something like that than start giving out variances. I think we're starting down a slippery slope with the forty A and the forty B across the street. I just feel like granting a variance when we had so much conversation about this project. I feel like we need to change some language to make it.
Well, if I may, there, there's a good reason why chapter forty A includes the opportunity for, for boards to grant variances. They are limited significantly to situations where the topography of a property, soil conditions, make it impractical to be consistent with the bylaw and that are unique to a particular site. When we look at this property and this project, I don't think there's a better example of a project that would legitimately justify the granting of a variance. And so I don't think it's, I don't think it would be precedent-setting, and what, what we would propose is that the zoning board allow the very, allow varying the decision, the description, the description of building height to change it from the perimeter of the building essentially to the front of the building. And as Samir mentioned moments ago, there are communities that determine building height on that basis. I, I understand where you're coming from, and I wish we weren't here having this discussion, but to, to try to revisit the idea of, of building definition and going back to what would probably be the spring town meeting would really be.
No, I think it would be November.
But the, the I'm, I'm not sure if there's, there's reason to do that because I think the opportunity exists already in statutes to do what we're proposing to do.
So I guess the law changed at the same time. You knew the conditions. So for me, I'm, I'm having a hard time justifying the bylaw change in essence for this project, and the conditions haven't changed, so.
We, 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 we knew the conditions, but until you do your due diligence, until you do your civil engineering, until you begin to try to design a building, you don't know how all that is going to affect a project. So there's been a lot of effort that's gone into the design. So there's been a lot of effort that's gone into the design and development of this project over the last year and a half. And we couldn't have known what we know today when the planning board was making its recommendations with respect to zoning changes.
I was saying the definition changed a year ago, so maybe we need to look at that. Maybe that isn't the best definition. We've gone through this. This is the first project with this new definition and maybe it doesn't suit our town needs.
The, the definition didn't really change dramatically. The definition is essentially the same. The only thing that changed is fifty-five foot building height.
No, we changed how we calculated.
I guess an argument over that, over doing what we can do. Or any other questions?
I have an opinion about this, but I don't think this is our jurisdiction. They've applied for a variance. Well, you intend to apply in a, in a, in a very near term. And I think the, the, it's the ZBAs. And I appreciate you coming to ask us. But, and then my opinion is that if they can build it on the, just the undisturbed area, and that is one of their alternatives, that the ZBA may well determine that the variance is in the best interest of the land and the town, which is what they're going to be charged with thinking about and the project. So if, you know, the risk here is that variance is denied and they go and say, well, we're going to have to use all the undisturbed land and, and build it that way. So I don't know what, how the ZBA will view that, but, but I do think it is the ZBA's jurisdiction and I.
Well, are you looking for blessing from us?
One of the, one of the reasons we're here is because this is really a planning issue. And, and we think that it's likely that the zoning board will ask the planning board for recommendation. And we're not asking you to make a determination this evening. But we wanted you to know the, a little bit of the background and we're happy to come back and answer any questions and provide more information. But we haven't applied. We'll probably be applying in October. It almost October and I was voting with a, a meeting before the zoning board mid-November. That would be our intention at one.
A ZBA typically asks us for our opinion on variances? I don't think so. Typically.
I don't call it.
Yeah, no. I think it says ZBA. It will be a ZBA matter, whether, regardless of what we.
Well, there, there, there's only one does ask others for opinions.
Sarah is on. I don't know, Sarah, do you have a comment? Sarah Melish.
Sorry, I was trying to find me, I'm mute. Yeah, we certainly can ask for input from the planning board. It would have to be, be quick because if it's submitted in October, we need it before us on our, our meeting in November, which is the third Wednesday of the month. So we, we need a response right away. We have to open our public hearing then.
We, we wouldn't necessarily expect that the zoning board would. Oh, it's you. The zoning board may not make a decision the night of the hearing. They often continue the public hearing. In which case they, they, it will be plenty of opportunity for the planning board to weigh in if the zoning board chooses to ask the planning board to do that.
Yeah, Ron, I was just gonna say the, the zoning board asked the planning board, like during the forty B process, right? Like it's just a, you know, they look for a one pager from the planning board, more than a recommendation.
I, I, there, there haven't been too many commercial projects in Manchester. I think that kind of thing is more likely to recur when, when something like this may be going on. But if somebody's building a house and they need a side yard setback variance, they're probably not going to ask the planning board.
Any, any other comments from the board? Yeah, is that all you have?
That, that's really all we have at this point. If you like, ask questions that were too difficult for me, the professionals.
Or the support. Okay, any questions from the board on that?
Have you done a box? Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Have you done a box model of the, of the fit on a, on the dis- on disturbed land?
Not since then, but early on it was one of the ideas. And the response from CSD was that's not going to fly by the time.
Well, it's.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Contentionally, it might be interesting.
Also, Michael Tom was not desirous of disturbing any more of the site than needed.
I don't think any of us are.
Right.
Yeah, it's clearly.
But, but I think that I, I'm not on the ZBA.
As an, as an illustration, you're saying of what did my, what it, what it.
If the planning board were asked for in, input, I would like to see the box model of the land, of what it does to the, how much land is disturbed that would otherwise not be disturbed? That would be a question, but as I, it's my opinion that.
I think.
We're advisory only.
Could probably provide both the zoning board and planning board with that.
You mean the rabbit model, the box?
That's the visual.
Or 3D models, 3D models.
However, then, or you're going to decide plan with the, where that is. So how much land, additional land would be disturbed? That's my opinion, but I'm not on the ZBA, so.
So we appreciate your time.
So you said you would be filing the application next month?
The application to the zoning board?
Yes.
Probably the second week in October. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay. Next up is a floodplain bylaw primer. Eric Carlson of the Mass Department of Conservation Recreation that has a management program will present a primer on floodplain zoning. Betsy, any opening remarks from conversations?
So we have been working on the floodplain bylaw for a couple of months. And Eric is the person at the state who reviews our drafts and makes recommendations. So his last comments to me, I think we had a numbering issue and some slight changes, but I think we're in pretty good shape for adoption at Springtown meeting. Legal counsel also had a couple of additional comments. That was pretty much it. And we have since found, and it's noted in my planner's report, that apparently there's a delay on the floodplain maps, so they will not be finalized until June, July of twenty twenty-four. So adoption at Springtown. Adoption at Springtown meeting is, is I think right on target. So the board asked for a primer on floodplain and Eric is the person to do that from the state. So we invited him to attend this meeting to discuss it. So it's all yours, Eric.
Thank you. One thing I just wanna say to correct something that you said, Betsy. We don't expect the mappings, the, the mapping, the, the updated flood insurance rate map and flood insurance study to be effective until spring twenty twenty-five. So we had originally expected what they call a letter of final determination in December of this year or early January twenty twenty-four. And what that means is the mapping becomes effective six months from the date of the letter of final determination. Letter of final determination is issued once the statutory appeals period is completed and everything, if any appeals are, are received, they're, they're resolved. That has been put off by a year. Now we expect the LFD in December twenty twenty-four or January twenty twenty-five, which would mean June or July twenty twenty-five for effective mapping date. So what that means, and just to backtrack a little bit, and just, I wanna give a little bit of background on the National Flood Insurance Program. National Flood Insurance Program is a voluntary program. Communities opt to participate in that program. In Massachusetts, all communities but ten participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. When a community participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, essentially what they've done is they've made an agreement with FEMA that they, the community, will regulate development within the hundred-year floodplain as identified on the mapping that FEMA provides, the flood insurance rate map and the flood insurance study that goes with the maps. In return for regulating development, FEMA will make flood insurance available through the National Flood Insurance Program within that participating community. So Manchester does participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. And something that's required when mapping is updated is the communities have to update their local regulations that are required by communities that participate in the program. They have to update their local regulations to adopt the new mapping. And there's been a mapping up, update underway now for several years now. And like Betsy said, it was expected to be effective in the spring of twenty twenty-four. It's now been delayed. In addition to updating the local regulations to adopt the mapping, we are also requiring that communities also update their local regulations to be compliant with what we call our state model bylaw. I said before that participating communities are required to regulate development in the hundred-year floodplain. The way that works in Massachusetts, most of FEMA's standards that are required for participating communities are actually in state regulations. So communities are required to, to meet those state regulations, regardless of whether they participate in the program or not. State regulations, primarily the Building Code and the Wetlands Protection Act regulations. Anything, any of FEMA's requirements that aren't in a state regulation have to be adopted at the local level and it's usually in a zoning regulation. And that's true in Manchester, Manchester by the sea. And it's true in most communities. Some communities have their local regulations in a local wetland regulation. Some have them in a local Board of Health regulation and some have them in different regulations. Like they'll have some things in zoning, some things in the subdivision regulation. Anyway, our state model has everything in it that FEMA requires that isn't already in a state regulation. Just a few years ago, FEMA sat down with us and asked us to make some changes in our state model bylaw. So we did that in twenty twenty. We added some things that weren't previously in our model bylaw. So there are some things in our model bylaw that are new to communities such as Manchester. So there are a number of new things that are being added to the zoning regulation. Most of those requirements that are new to the state model and new to communities are administrative requirements. So it, the requirements that are new to the state model, they're not new FEMA requirements. FEMA has required these all along, but they identified these as being deficient in our previous model bylaw. And so anyway, I've sat down, or you know, figuratively speaking, sat down with Betsy and gone back and forth with some drafts and some comments. And like Betsy said, we are pretty close to having a draft that would be considered fully compliant with the state model bylaw. Now, at this point, it's up to you, the community, whether you want to adopt that. Now, you could go ahead and adopt that at Springtown meeting. Adopt those changes to be compliant with the state model bylaw. Or you could wait till spring twenty twenty-five, when the mapping is expected to become effective and adopt the state model bylaw changes as well as the updated mapping. So that's up to you. Either way, I will help you in that process to make sure it goes the way it, it ought to go.
Couldn't we just write the regulation to refer to the current state map, the, the current mapping and not not worry about waiting till twenty twenty-five?
You could do that. You could update your, your zoning to meet the current mapping, but then you would have to update again in twenty twenty-five when the new mapping.
Couldn't we just say it's the current, you, can't we just say current mapping without naming?
Okay, I see what you're asking. The answer is no, because what that would mean, if you, if you adopt something that says the current mapping and then FEMA could change the map and the map defines a zoning district. So changes made by FEMA would mean changes to your zoning district and those changes would be made without being approved at town meeting. And the Attorney General will not accept a bylaw that has a zoning district that can change without being approved at town meeting.
I got it.
Can we just write the bylaw that's, so we can figure out how to just change the map at town meeting? If the language wouldn't change?
I think you're asking is, the draft that Betsy and I have worked on, that would bring the zoning into compliance with our state model bylaw. So that would be fully compliant if you did that in your spring twenty twenty-four town meeting. Now, spring twenty twenty-five, it would still be compliant with the state model bylaw, but it would have to be updated to adopt the new mapping that we expect to be effective in spring twenty twenty-five.
I haven't done my homework on this issue as much as I should. And so you get, you said that FEMA, or the, the purpose is to regulate zoning within the floodplain district as defined by the maps. Can you give me a sense of what the high-level restrictions or requirements are for development in that zone? And then the second part of my question is, how do those? Well, in our case, they intersect with the MBTA zoning. Well, the half-mile MBTA station certainly is. Are in, but so can you give me a high, give us a high level of the requirements are?
Okay, so like I said before, most actual standards for construction and other development are in state regulations like the Building Code. So the Building Code has standards for what's required for a new construction or substantial improvement of a structure in the floodplain. So that's in the state Building Code. Wetlands Protection Act also has standards for what has to be done for development that takes place in defined resource areas under the Wetlands Protection Act. The hundred-year floodplain as defined on the flood insurance rate maps, whether it's coastal, it's called land subject to coastal storm flowage. If it's non-coastal, it's bordering land subject to flooding. So Wetlands Protection Act has standards that have to be met for bordering land subject to flooding and they will for land subject to coastal storm flowage. The, what's required in the zoning regulation, like I said, are mostly administrative requirements. And if I could, if I could share my screen, I might be able to just kind of scroll through. If, if I share my screen, will you be able to see what I'm showing you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, good. I am going to. Let's see, here it is. This is the model bylaw. Do you, do you see a document on your screen? Required local bylaws, do you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so um there's twenty different things that are required here. Many of which you already have in your bylaw. Some of them are new and will have to be added. You already have a purpose. And that's number one, stated purpose. Um and it's basic stuff, ensure public safety, eliminate costs. I won't read the whole thing to you. Uh two, define the district using the uh flood insurance rate map, flood insurance study. Again, that's something you do have, it'll have to be updated. Designation of a floodplain administrator, that's new, and it's in the draft that uh Betsy's been working on. Permits required for proposed development, that's new. It doesn't take the place of permits that are all already required, like uh building permits, uh order of conditions through. Um conservation, but it makes sure that. All things that are defined as development, and there is a specific definition for that. Um are reviewed and approved by the town. Um. It doesn't have to be a formal permit like a floodplain permit. Some some communities have that, like for instance. Beverly already has that, they've been doing that for for a long time, actually, but. Uh it has to be uh documented that you've reviewed this and approved it and determined that there are. Not adverse impacts from what's being proposed. Uh assure that other permits that are required are obtained, like if there's another state or federal permit. Make sure that those are obtained. Again, these are mostly administrative requirements. Uh floodway encroachment is not administrative. Um I don't believe. Manchester has floodways identified on the flood insurance rate map, although I do think you already do have that standard. Uh but anyway, floodway encroachment, it's a riverine situation where an encroachment in a floodway has to be. It has to be determined that it won't have uh won't cause a rise in flood elevations if there is an encroachment proposed. Um unnumbered A zones, there are some zones that don't have elevations associated with them. So uh any development in one of those zones, it has to be determined. What flood elevation will be used. Uh drainage requirements for AO and AH zones. Subdivision proposals have to be reviewed to assure that these things are met. Minimize flood damage. These are very broad requirements, by the way. Adequate drainages provided. Public utilities and facilities located and constructed so as to minimize flood damage. Um in unnumbered A zones, I talked about those before, they don't have flood elevations. Any development fifty lots or five acres, the developer has to or proponent has to. Determine base flood elevations for those proposals. There are requirements for placement of recreational vehicles. Protection of dunes. Uh these are notification requirements. Uh this one's already in your bylaw. So if there's a water course alteration, notification has to be made. Again, a notification requirement. If there is a proposal that changes flood elevations. FEMA and my office have to be notified of that, so we know about it for future mapping changes. There are requirements for variances to building code requirements. Now, most communities, including yours. Building code variances are done at the state. So what the town has to do is just document that the process was followed. And uh notification is maintained in your records. Variances to your local but um zoning. If you have a variance to any of these standards I'm talking about right now, you have to follow this process. And then the uh last few are just um legal. Uh abrogation disclaimer and severability. Local enforcement, you already have, so that's just there. Because FEMA requires us to tell you that you have to have enforcement provisions in place. Um there are also some definitions. Not all of these definitions are relevant, but you will need to have. Um this one for development. I don't think you're gonna need floodway, I I will check on that. I don't think you have floodways. Functionally dependent use, highest adjacent grade, historic structure, new construction. Recreational vehicle and start a construction, structure. Substantial repair of a foundation, variance in violation. So it sounds like a lot, but. It boils down to uh a couple pages, I forget how long, Betsy can tell you how long it is, but. Anyway, those are the things that are required. I'll unshare. So does anyone have questions on? What I've said so far?
I have a question. Uh you mentioned that it might be okay for us to delay. Adopting new regulation until the maps are valid.
Yes, we are not gonna require that communities do two updates, so. What we were originally going to require was when the maps become effective, communities. Update to adopt the maps and to meet the model bylaw. The maps are put off for a year, so we're not gonna make communities update once for the model bylaw. And then update a second time for the mapping. You can do this if you like, and I'll help you if you want to do that. But you have the option of doing everything in the Springtown Meeting twenty twenty five.
Is the town at any risk in the meantime while we're waiting to update the bylaw?
Uh they're at no risk of being um. Being punished by FEMA, for lack of a better term. FEMA's not gonna require that you update to meet the model bylaw until the mapping becomes effective.
But is there some other reason in terms of protecting the? Floodplain that maybe we do want to update and update soon?
I think having, having the fully compliant state model bylaw. Would be helpful, because there were a few things in there that aren't in your bylaw right now that you might have trouble enforcing if it. Came down to it, like for instance, if. Somebody had a recreational vehicle and they had it uh in a place that was a floodplain. And you don't have that standard in your local regulation, it's not in a state regulation, so you wouldn't be able to enforce it. That's just one example.
You have draft maps already, correct?
One ones, yeah, I mean.
Are they gonna change? But I mean, there, is there reason it's being delayed till? Is it gonna change much from what we have already?
Um are your, is your mapping gonna change? Is that what your question is?
Yes.
Okay, um your mapping is changing. Uh I think you have a total of eleven panels. Nine of the eleven panels are changing. Uh I wanna note, I don't think I said this before, but the mapping update is only for the non-coastal. Floodplain, so none of your coastal floodplain is changing, but you have non-coastal floodplain and. Uh there is a mapping product that I can show you. Actually, I can probably give you an example. If I share my screen once again. Uh I think it's gonna be on this tab. Okay. Okay, this is one of your effective maps. Okay, hold on.
You could see the map.
Yeah.
But not now, we can see zoom, we see zoom now.
Okay, so I'm gonna have to share a different screen. Share screen. Okay. Do you see a map?
Yes.
Yes.
Up on your screen, do you see my cursor moving around?
Yes.
Do you see this yellow area?
Yes.
Okay, this is what's called, and I can send you a link and and you can look at this. Uh this is a a website that shows changes to all of the panels. Right now, I'm on panel uh three, uh I'm sorry, four thirty-four, which is one of nine panels. So the um. The legend will tell you that this yellow area is newly added floodplain. So that's how this works. Yellow indicates newly added floodplain and purple. Indicates uh floodplain that's been removed. So you see all the yellow areas. Those are newly added floodplain. This is all, again, this is all non-coastal floodplain areas that I'm showing you. I'm just trying to zoom out, see if I can find a place where. Floodplain has been reduced. There are some places, like over here, I don't think, think. Yeah, this, there is Wenham. So anyway, I can show you, I can send you this link, you can, you can look at it yourself, it's kind of. Hard to do in the course of the meeting, but as you can see. Takes a little while for the computer to catch up. As you can see, there uh are. Places that are added, a- any place, like I said, any place where you see that yellow. That's added floodplain. On this panel, I don't see any reduced floodplain. But I know there is reduced floodplain in there also. So I can send you that link, you can take a look at that. Um I'll send it to Betsy. And she can make sure everybody. Has that. Again, those mapping changes won't happen, we don't expect them until. June or July twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Uh Betsy?
So um two points, when he, when Eric had that map up. Um I'm not sure if Eric is aware that the dam. Um at the inner harbor is going to be removed, which will allow. Um full flow of. Um I believe that's Sawmill Brook. Um. That is gonna allow free flow um of that whole area. That was shown in yellow. So I will follow up with you on that, and I will have DPW. Send you the details of what they're proposing to do, because that may impact that floodzone area.
Yes, and um it it may very well. That would be one of those situations where I I showed you some of those, those newly required administrative standards. And submission of new technical data that would fall under that, so um. You could also submit it, uh you are right now in an appeal period, which will end at the um, I think it's November thirtieth. Started September first, and the community did get a letter to that effect. So there is an appeal period. I can, uh if you don't have a copy of that, Betsy, I can send you that and.
No, I have that.
Oh, you do? Okay, very good.
So I will send that to you with DPW's information.
Okay, very good.
What are we appealing? What's, what's?
You're, you're technically appealing the the maps and the floodzones, as I understand it.
But they're not ready yet.
Good, you you don't have to appeal these. Um this could be a situation, if you think this uh you have information. That would would change what's on this map, you could. Supply that information as part of an appeal, you could, or you could submit it. Under that standard that I told you about submission of new technical data. There's a number of things you can do.
So the second issue I had is um one of the new elements is floodplain administrator. And I know that in other communities I've worked in, sometimes it's been the planner, sometimes it's been the town administrator. Sometimes it's been the building inspector, sometimes it's been the conservation agent. And in Manchester's situation, we have a part-time building inspector, um our conservation agent. Um her hours were recently cut pretty dramatically. So I'm not sure if she would have the time to do it. Um. I'm not sure that the town administrator is the appropriate person. It seems to me that. The building inspector who's dealing with building code is the logical person. Um so anyhow, right now, the bylaw is worded so that. The building inspector is the floodplain administrator. Um so that's something that um. Warrants some discretion.
That, that is a decision that's up to the town. Um I will say that, uh like you just said, Betsy, uh. Most communities, I would say, select the building inspector or building commissioner, but. It's up to the town which person they think is appropriate.
Mary?
Uh thank you for this, it's been very helpful. Um just wanted to get your take on it. I had made a recommendation um that other communities have done. Uh I think Gloucester is a good example, where they put in this bylaw. Um some restrictions and and I think it usually applies to the VE zone, which would be coastal. Um and I don't even know how many houses or buildings we have in that zone um that limits. Future um expansion of a property. Um do you have any take on any of that?
That, that's something you could do, that would be considered a higher standard. FEMA has minimum standards, so. Participate in communities at a minimum have to meet FEMA's minimum standards. If they want to have more protective standards, they can do some of those things through zoning, like they could have. Something like you just said, limiting, you know, expansion of a building based on square footage or percentage of square footage. Uh generally, we encourage that sort of thing. Uh generally, there's a lot of pushback when a community wants to do that sort of thing, but. That is something you can consider by all means.
And would you advise that, I mean, obviously, we should first get an inventory of even how many buildings or houses we'd be talking about? Is that correct?
Yeah, I I think you should do that, you should. You do some research and and see how many people would be affected and. And how they would be affected.
But not till twenty twenty five, correct, when the maps are out?
Um I thought he said coastal wasn't changing. Is that correct? The coastal panels aren't changing.
Your coastal floodplain is not changing.
Oh, um, okay, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sarah?
Oh, so as I understand it, the um actual requirements for a building are, unless we add something in zoning. Are current, in the current building code.
Right, all building standards are in the building code.
Okay, so the.
You can't have building standards in uh local regulations, because the state has a uniform building code.
Okay, and then the second question, so then the applicability of the. All of these uh the bylaw would only. Apply to someone who is making a change to their property. And they're seeking a building permit.
Right, so so these standards would apply for for new development. Uh or changes to existing, which would be considered development.
And what is the threshold? You mentioned substantial. Didn't say substantial renovation, but what's the, is it a level two renovation or level three or level one?
No, it's something different. Um that is a building code definition, substantial improvement. And it's defined in the building code and it's consistent with FEMA's regulations. It's defined as any improvement to a structure. Uh the cost of which is fifty percent or more the value of the structure prior to the improvement. And substantial, buildings that are substantially. And substantial, buildings that are substantially improved are required to meet building code standards for flood-resistant construction.
So in addition, that's not fifty percent?
An addition could be a substantial improvement, it would be determined by the building department.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the board?
Um, yeah, I'm actually finding, uh, online, I see, uh, um, an actual presentation from two thousand sixteen, we don't need to go through it about the actual building code, but I, I just skimmed through it, I think it's helpful. Is that the, I think though, it looks like it's from you, Eric, in two thousand sixteen, is there a more current version of that, that we could just?
I would probably send you, I, I do presentations on building code a lot, so I could probably send you a more recent building code presentation.
Then we get a, get kind of a sense of what those requirements are in the code, because then we're, we know what we're, what we're referencing, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, um, thank you, Eric. Appreciate it, um, we will continue with, uh, what, uh-
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Always, thank you.
Yep, bye.
Yeah. So, being on, um, so since our last meeting, the select board has decided to hold a special town meeting on November thirteenth. Um, got an email from Ann that they are moving forward with that. And I know we had decided not to put anything on special town meeting, it was just stuff from zoning or our items. So since then, uh, Laura has issued some proposed language for the amendment of to table, the used table four point two note thirteen. I think I sent her proposed language to everyone. And I want, uh, Sarah, would you wanna speak on that in Laura's absence?
Um, sure.
And we wanna see if we wanna move this forward to special town meetings.
Um, sure, I think, I don't have it in front of me, uh, but the proposal is to, I believe it's to strike the word employee. We currently allow, um, employee housing with a special permit from the ZBA in a existing, um, uh, garage or carriage house. And her proposed, and we learned that to add family, which was our original intent, um, to employee and for a family member was, um, not legal, because we would be adding, restricting who can live in a particular dwelling. And thus, we can infer and believe that the employee, uh, the limiting that used to employee is, um, also problematic. So Laura's proposal that she suggested last meeting is just to strike, um, employee and to restrict the, uh, and to, uh, um, uh, prohibit that for short-term rentals. And to put that on the town, um, meeting, November thirteenth town meeting warrant. Um, and I guess, I'm, uh, I didn't really, um, just paraphrasing what she said last time, which is the small step to, uh, toward less expensive houses that are, um, uh, secondary to, that's not the right word, the primary structure. Um, that's what we're looking at. Um, less, yeah, they're behind, yeah, they're not the primary structure. And that, uh, also would, um, allow potentially houses that for family members who might be seniors or might be juniors, but, but.
So, um, yeah, I think, um, Sarah Melish was requested by the ZBA and, um, maybe Sarah, if uh, Sarah, if you could speak on your, on the ZBA's concerns on this language?
Yes, so there's two concerns. One is what we're seeing, what we've been seeing is, is that people, there's three things actually, um, that people want their family members to be able to live in detached dwellings because the parents want independence. And in order to allow them to do that, they have to quote-unquote pretend to be employees. And there's nothing we can do about that if they say they're gonna be an employee. Number two is that this, this bylaw originally was intended for the larger states where they used it for employees. And over the years, the town has lost sight of that, and many of those units are now being rented. Um, and then the third thing, to, to anybody they want, the third thing is it says existing accessory dwelling, accessory unit, but it doesn't have a date attached to it. So we had a situation on Central Street where the accessory dwelling was built relatively recently. Um, and we had no date to reference as to by which date it needed to have been erected in order to qualify under this segment of the bylaw. So there needs to be a date attached to the quote-unquote existing. And I'm assuming the existing was meant to be whenever this bylaw, this section of the bylaw was added, and I have no clue when that is. Thank you.
Okay, um, Betsy, any comments from, uh, we received from town council on this? You had questioned?
Um, not yet, because I haven't sent town council, um, I don't think I sent town council the full language.
Okay, but there was a determination issue, there was a legality issue with the current-
Well, that was on a, on a prior, um, version. Um,
Okay.
Where legal counsel made the determination that it can't, um, it violates the law Fair Housing Act and whatever, as it relates to a family member. And so, um, there were a number of concerns he had regarding one of the last drafts. And my concern with this most recent change is this reference to a family dwelling unit, which I don't, there's no definition of a family dwelling unit. Um, and then there was another concern. Um, I mean, the issue is, is whoever lives in a unit, um, whether it's a relative or, um, an employee or a private individual, um, it's still gonna have the same impact. You still have somebody living in an accessory unit.
Any discussions further on the board, uh, Sue?
I might be confused, but I guess I would like to know what is our goal in making this change, because I'm not sure the change achieves all.
Ron, I would, I would agree with that. Can I speak?
Mary?
So I, my understanding is that this came about from the email that you forwarded from Sarah Melish from the ZBA saying that they were having this issue with family members. And so it was first designated to include family members, and then we found out we couldn't do that because of the legal issues. So now it's become so watered down, we're just saying for an accessory structure, attached, not attached, no date attached to that either, that this opens it up to anybody with no, um, square footage requirements, no, um, size limit, you know, no size limits. Um, obviously, it'll have to go to the, the parking, off-street parking table to get capacity for off-street parking, but, um, this just becomes kind of bypassing our current ADU bylaw and say, people would just come under this one to get an ADU passed with no restrictions. And so if that's what we wanna do, if that's how voters wanna vote, that's fine, but that was not the original intent of the ZBA sending that to us. My impression, in my opinion, so you know, Sarah just explained, looking for family members for parents who want independence, and that doesn't get to this.
Um, Sarah, any comments on that?
Sarah Melish?
Yes, Sarah Melish.
Yes, um, so I think that the original intent of the law and what we intended by including family members is that the units would not be rented, because they were never rented to employees. And so it makes sense that you would have family members there and not rent them. So that's kind of, and I don't know if you can add that in to the bylaw and say they can't be rented on any, any basis. And that would kind of protect from having third-party renters.
So, Christine? I guess, when you have an employment contract, if you are having, if you're, you know, supplied housing, it's part of your employment contract. So you are renting per se, right, it's part of your compensation. So that's my number one concern there, and number two, how are we going to enforce this?
Sarah?
Um, so just to correct, uh, I think what Mary said, this, uh, I think Laura's proposal remains to have a special permit by the ZBA, so that it's not without any oversight or controls. They are, um, they would be, uh, those that are imposed by the ZBA. Um, uh, I suppose the ZBA could impose a requirement that the unit not be rented as part of its conditions, but I do agree with Christine that they're hard, especially over time, in the passage of time, to enforce. Um, however, if, um, I employ Chris to live, to, to to have, to live in my, above my garage as my, you know, nanny, um, uh, and then my children grow up and I like Chris and I continue to allow him to live there, um, rent-free or not rent-free, how does that change the impact on a neighbor or a, the impact on town services or any other thing? It's the same exact person. Um, and whether he pays rent or doesn't pay rent seems to me to be between the individual and the property owner. So, um, and then to Sue's point, um, I think we're struggling, we have struggled for a long time with this particular provision and the ZBA has. So, uh, we know that restricting, uh, I have the attorney's, um, language open here, basically you can't prohibit based on familial status, but you also can't prohibit rental sale or dwelling based on familial status or, um, any person, to any person based race, color, religion, sex, familial status or national origin. So, um, it doesn't say whether you can restrict to employee or not, I don't know whether that's what the, what the issue there is. But, um, it seems to me that we're, it's a opportunity to make a small, um, inroad on some less expensive, um, housings that are subordinate to the primary house. So that's what I think we are trying to do, and we have been unable to, uh, do it, um, in the ADU bylaw and attack all of the problems that are in nine point one. Um, and we have this opportunity, I don't think it's, um, heavily used at this point, and I, but that, you know, I don't have a crystal ball.
Chris? So, uh, I want someone to point out that this would only apply to existing unattached garages and carriage houses. So it's different from the ADU law, which we had said would be only within an existing residential structure. So right away, it's what we're really talking about here is um, providing an opportunity to create housing inexpensively in existing buildings in neighborhoods. They're not currently being used for residential use, although I suspect most of them are already being used residentially, and this would be a way of reg- regularizing, is that the word, uh, justifying, legalizing existing illegal units that are throughout the town. So I think it's a good idea and we should uh, proceed with the public hearing.
So, um, two points on that, so to Sarah Melish's point, then we should put in the date that this bylaw was created, so I don't know what that date implies, actually, I'm a little bit confused. Um, because existing, to her point, could mean it was built yesterday. Um, and it doesn't say detached, so I don't know if that was your intent.
Um, it did say detached.
What's that?
Says existing garage.
It doesn't say attached or detached.
Well, we could.
Um, so I think it's getting closer if we put in the date of when this bylaw was introduced, because again, existing doesn't mean anything. And, you know, I've, I've already voiced my concern, but I'll voice it again, that, I mean, this is just kind of opening up for, um, you know, every ten of these, we're gonna be one affordable housing unit behind, and it's opening up that, um, people will just use that for, um, you know, it might be that lovely scenario of a nanny, but I don't know how often that's gonna happen. It'll be for rentals and, because you can't impose, again, to Sarah Melish's point, you know, that they, they're not rented out, so, um, as we continue to talk, I can look up when it was in the bylaw.
Sue?
So, I, I'm confused about that point, because if it already exists, how's it going to count against us? For affordable housing, if it's already existing.
Well, it's just a garage now.
Well, it's as part of an existing, I mean, you, you're not building a new, are you building a new unit?
Yes.
Are building a new unit, okay.
I, and I just wanna reiterate, Sarah. Uh, Laura's point last time was that our affordable housing deficit is the product of many years of, um, of, uh, of growth and, um, it is a problem to be solved, but it doesn't mean we should stop thinking about creative ways to create senior housing for seniors or less expensive housing units, and this is one way to do that. So that was what she said last time, and just to try to leave her at that response again.
Nineteen eighty-three.
Nineteen eighty-three, Sarah Melish?
Yeah, just to respond to Sue's, um, comment is that it's only the structure that needed to be existing, you could add a housing unit to that structure. So it does create new units.
So, we had, um, suggested existing, excuse me,
Sarah?
Um, existing being, uh, having an occupancy permit for two years. Um, I think going back to nineteen eighty-three just puts us in a, I mean, that's forty years ago, that seems, um, not-
But it, it, it eliminates a problem we've had where people build them, and then they say they're existing and we have to allow the accessory use. And I don't think that was the intent of the bylaw, I think the intent of the bylaw was whenever it was passed that it was anything existing as of that date.
Well, we could, we could also say five years or something, it's all arbitrary.
Right?
It's not really arbitrary, I'm sorry, Ron. Hi. I don't really feel like it's arbitrary, I feel like people can build an accessory building, and then, you know, five years later, they can install whatever they want, and this is a way to get, another way to get around this law. So if the intent of this bylaw was to, you know, use existing buildings, that's fine, but I don't think people complain for five years, you can have a rec room and then all of a sudden, now you have a rental unit. So I, I just think it's another way to get around this. So if the intent is to do an ADU, then do a proper ADU bylaw, don't keep watering this thing down and giving people more backdoors. And I, again, how are we going to enforce this? We gonna knock on doors and say, give me a blood sample of your family, I think this is-
I think the enforcement, I think the enforcement issue is a little bit of red herring, because we're not enforcing it now, we're not-
So why are we going to just keep opening up a job of the building inspector that he's not doing, and we're gonna give him more floodplain and just keep piling on things that just don't seem to happen?
I don't think we're piling on things, it's not gonna- I think we're piling on things. It's not going to happen everywhere. We're probably not talking more than.
Yeah, but we're hiring a building inspector and we're talking about adding.
That's not our concern.
So let's try not to have. Let's go through the chair. And then one person speaks, then the other speaks. Do that. Remind the board. Sarah.
We. Don't know how the town feels about this issue. We've talked around and around circles around it. And, um. You know, a handful of people will come to a public hearing, maybe more than a handful. But the question is, how does, how do voters feel? And we, we really don't know. So, um, I feel that this is. An opportunity to, um. Ask voters if they'd like to, um. Provide. An opportunity for. Be small, what, what I. Intentionally would be smaller. Maybe we can restrict the size, whatever. I'm not sure, but. Let's hear from them in the public hearing and then let's take it to town meeting and hear what they, what the voters as a, as a group. Say about this issue. So then we have, uh, so what then we know.
I, I, absolutely. I think we should u- understand what residents want and, um, I think that. We should do that and then draft a bylaw. I think it's, we're kind of already preempting that we're going to. Do a public forum and bring it to town meeting. I mean, I think we need to get feedback and then come back as a board. And discuss and figure out if we're going to go, you know, this direction or a different direction. Give it some time to, um, draft properly because I, I, this is just very weak at the moment. There's no, there's no. Bumpers around it whatsoever. So, um. I think it makes sense to do a public forum or. You know, an open house or whatever you want to call it to understand what residents want and then draft the bylaw. Two cents.
Chris, did you have a hand up?
I do, I do.
Okay. So, um. We have the opportunity to push this to town meeting, which would require, uh, someone to. Straighten up the language a little bit, put this date on it and maybe rewrite this a little bit and then have a public hearing on it and move it. See what the public says and bring it in, or we could just. As Mary says. Hold off and just have a public forum. And not do any, uh, not bring this forward to town meeting in November. So, um, I think that's what. The choices are.
I'm going to make a motion that we hold a public hearing on our second meeting in October. If we post tomorrow that we shouldn't have time to do that. Um, and that we, um. Following that public hearing, we make a decision about it's, uh, moving into town or not. Holding the public hearing does not obligate us to put it on the town meeting warrant. And it will give us an opportunity to hear some good ideas from people, think a little bit more about it and to, uh. Provide it as, improve it as necessary, um. Or, or tailwind as necessary. So as my, my motion is to move it forward, go public hearing in our second meeting in October, whatever that is.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? I have a discussion item. So in order to do that, we would really need to get some kind of. Draft language tomorrow to the cricket. In order to.
I think we have some draft language.
Any other discussion?
So this is the draft that's going to. So.
Sue.
Is. The language for. Is it what was attached to. Laura's email to you?
Yes, that's the language.
That's the language.
But I think we can sharpen it a little bit with this, you know, maybe date restricted and, uh, um. I think we could rewrite the language a little bit tonight.
The subject of a, Betty, uh, or Gail, I mean, the subject of a public notice doesn't need to have the exact language. Of the bylaw.
Run that by me again.
I believe that a public hearing notice simply needs to give. You don't have to nail down the exact, um, language, but you do need to have, um. A draft at the town clerk of the draft language. Um, so, uh, we, we, but it would still be draft language at the town clerk, not the. This is not the final language that we go on the warrant. But it should, if we can improve it. Great, that's awesome.
That's, you have a comment?
I do, um, the, when the legal notice goes in, the legal notice can be a general. Explanation of what is being considered, but the date that the notice is posted, um. In the cricket, that information, that exact, the language that is being considered. Needs to be available at the town clerk and at the library.
You mean. By Thursday is what you're saying, when the cricket publishes?
Yes.
Is there further discussion on the motion, Christina?
So this language is not going to town council. Is that correct?
I think the final language will go to town council. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's, that's the procedure.
So we have a public hearing without having town council's opinion?
Public hearing be. Three weeks from now.
But we're scheduling a meeting without the opinion of town council. Just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly.
I can probably forward the information tonight to town council and get. Comments on what he might have concerns with.
We're still not going to meet as a board and publicly discuss whatever town council is going to relate to us. We're just going to wing it. And just keep pushing these things through without. Metting them properly.
That I mean, that was a decide whether we move it forward. I think that was the motion. So.
Without town council's opinion.
We would have, I think we had to have two and a half weeks or three weeks between now and the next meeting or two. To have town council weigh in and I agree, they should weigh in.
Becky, you have a comment?
Yeah, town council can weigh in anytime between now and. Um, when the hearing is held and we can. Tweak some drafts back and forth, I guess.
We could cancel the hearing if we don't hear back from town council.
Oh, you'll hear from town council.
Becky, you have a hand, you have your hand up? You're on mute. Still on mute. Becky, I'm mute. We can't hear you. Like technical difficulties. Christina.
Trading emails back and forth is in violation of the open meeting, right? So we actually need to get town council's opinion and then meet as a board and discuss. We just can't trade emails. So.
No one's suggesting that.
What we just said.
No, but don't you have a meeting on October tenth? Yeah. So you'd be discussing on October tenth.
Yeah, we can discuss it then before.
On. You just said the second.
Said the second meeting in October.
That was my concern. I thought you meant October second. I'm like, this isn't going to happen. So the sixteenth? The tenth to twenty-third.
Whenever our second meeting is in October, it's the twenty-fifth or it's on the agenda. Okay, so a- any more discussion on the motion?
I just want to satisfy myself. I'm sorry. So what we're voting on right now. Is Sarah's motion. To. Hold a public hearing on the second meeting in October. Um, where the public will be able to comment on. The topic of this proposed bylaw. We were not voting tonight. On the exact language. Okay. Is that right?
Yeah.
And. A hearing means we're proposing it for town meeting.
Right.
Well, my, my motion was to hold a public hearing and then decide about whether we advance it to town meeting following a public hearing. Because there is at least two weeks. Just the warrant. Uh, time, the three weeks. So if we were to. Make action on that, at that meeting, we could advance it or not advance it. Depending on what we decide.
Any further comments from the board? With Mr. Gates.
Tim Gates, two Desmond Avenue. I presume. That there are. Several. Collage apartments. Currently occupied by family members in the town. I've got some likely suspects both on my own street, Desmond Avenue. And on Pleasant Street. I'm sure there are more. Are they going to be? Affecting whether the collage is attached or detached with the principal building on the site. The other. Thing is. What are we going to do about the present exceptions? And what's going to happen down the line with the need for the. Forty B housing and people converting. Their houses or collagen to make those housing. Opportunity. The, uh. One I haven't suggested work about.
Mister, Mister Gates, can you make this, make your comments at the public hearing? Because right now the board is deciding whether to even.
And not try to put.
Okay, so the board will thank you for your comments.
The, uh, the workaround would suggest is that the. Family occupant, you put on a. Employee contract. With a very long settlement, the obligation to be on call for late house meeting at any time. And they must have in the. Situation. So. In order to live with that.
Thank you. On Sarah's motion. All those in favor, um, miss, let's go around. Sue.
Yes.
Sarah, Chris.
Yes.
Mary.
No.
Uh, Christina. Chair votes yes, four to. Bring it forward. Thank you. So on August twenty-fourth, Betsy met with the Historic District Commission regarding the information that they had requested on a demolition delay bylaw. The bylaw is a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw, which aims to protect historic structures. We do not have a demolition delay bylaw. We tried to adopt one in twenty twelve. Remember that. The bylaw failed at town meeting. So I'll have ask for comment from Sarah and Betsy on this.
Um, sure. I had heard Betsy, I mentioned this several times. And so I got kind of interested in it, but then I, uh, I spoke with Rosemary Costello, who's. Head of the Historic Commission and I, um, know Betsy, uh, also. Uh, shares the opinion that this, um, bylaw should be shepherded. By the Historic Commission, um. And we can support them in that or not support them as the, as the appropriate. Um, I believe that in our packet, there is a, a draft, uh, you have a one in from two thousand, uh, a draft bylaw. Just to give you a sense of what kinds of things it would include, but I'm not sure we need to. Take any action except to know that it's out there. It might be coming, um, and, um. Think about it. So I think Rosemary is.
I think Rosemary's on if.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I just wanted to give you a couple of data points, um. Of the three hundred and fifty-one communities in Massachusetts, a hundred and fifty-nine have demolition delay bylaws. Uh, this is data from Mass Historic, the State Historic Preservation Office. Um, and of the one hundred and seventy-seven MBTA communities, a hundred and nine of them. Have demolition delay bylaws. Um, many of our neighboring communities, Essex, Hamilton, Beverly, Salem. Um, Newbury, Rowley, Newport, Swamp Scott, um, they all have demolition delay bylaws. Uh, this is really a time tactic in order to. Uh, give the community an opportunity to use public pressure in a sense to influence. Um, a property owner to preserve a structure rather than tear it down. Uh, there is no prohibition. Um, from tearing it down. Ultimately, it would just delay the timeline, um, of the demolition and give. The community, uh, the opportunity to find other solutions. For a historic, historically significant or architecturally significant, um, structure in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any comments from the board on that? We're just going to, uh, move this, let just make everyone aware of it. And, uh, Betsy, you have any comments? I know you.
Um, I think Rosemary said a fair amount what I would say, um, the. Um. Demolition delay bylaw from Winchester, which was in your packets, is a pretty good bylaw. And, um, I think there needs to be some understanding, um, and a huge public education process regarding this. Because what people are going to say is, oh, you know, you're going to prevent me from demolishing my building and. It's really only applies to significant historic structures. And I know that. The Historical Commission is working hard to get more inventory work done, uh, more survey work. Done on existing buildings in town and that's a very important element of this effort.
Okay, thank you. Wait for something from H T C. Just on this Eastern Way, Way Services Site Suitability, uh, Betsy received, the Board of Health received a notice from Mass. D E P of a site suitable suitability application for a new site. From Eastern Way Services located on twenty-four Condaland Road in Gloucester. I think, Betsy, you would just, any board member has comments. I suggest we just send them along to you, Betsy. We're, uh, moving on to the board now.
Yeah, um. I ended up actually. Doing a reasonably in-depth review of the application today and there is a hearing, um. That the Board of Health has the ability to comment on. Um, I think it's sometime in early November. Um. So the issue with this particular development is. Um, they had originally, Hiltz originally had the approval for, um. Operation of a certain volume of tons per day and they were far exceeding that. So. Um, this new application is basically. To rectify that they were exceeding their, their limits, um. My main concern in the whole thing is traffic because most of the traffic will likely be. On, um. Magnolia Avenue, um, one twenty-seven. Um, and one twenty-eight and, um, there's, I didn't have a full opportunity to dig into the traffic. But I think it's important to try to shift the traffic to. One twenty-eight and, um. Essex Ave and Magnolia Ave in Gloucester to get to Condaland Road. So, um, I will, um, continue to take a look at it. Um, it's online and it's also, um, the. Board of Health has a copy and there's also a copy at the library. So. Um, if anybody wants to review it and, um, I probably will have comments that I will forward to Ron regarding this.
I think I'll put it in the packet too on Sunday, but.
Yeah.
Sarah.
Uh, that's specifically the traffic. Uh, that's specifically the traffic um, consideration would probably be the height of the bridge on Lincoln Street. Because they would come in, if they came through Manchester, they'd come down School Street, Lincoln Street to to Summer and then to Conlon Road, so the maybe there may be a way that the hearing could condition, you know, condition the the directions to the site to come one thirty three uh, one thirty three to Magnolia Ave. Um, because the height of the bridge could be an issue for the trucks bringing construction debris and the safety around school. But you think traffic is your, is probably an issue.
Okay, Sarah, Melish.
I'm sorry, I wanted to talk back in the demolition delay, is it too late?
Quickly.
Yeah, so I just, if if you, I want you to keep in mind that seventy five percent of the properties are non-conforming. So if they have a single family home on it and they do not use it as a single family residence for two years, they lose the right to have a single family residence on that property. So the demolition delay might impact Z B A with respect to variance requests if it goes for two years. That's all, thanks. Just keep in mind.
Okay, thank you. Sue.
So on this, um.
This meaning.
Meaning.
The way services or.
The Hiltz thing.
Yes.
Um, so from, I haven't looked at anything other than what was in our book. But it looks like it is a big change because it was recycling. And this is construction and demolition based.
Right.
That's different. Um, and it's a much bigger volume. Um, and this facility, uh, it's near University Lane and Manchester's Magnolia Ave, sort of. Um, where it is where you can hear it. So um, that was just a couple of things I noticed, and I wanted to make sure I read it correctly, it's not just recycling. And that they're going to be doing more than simply sorting recycling.
That's right.
Um, right.
Is there a noise? Uh, maybe Betsy could pass along noise concerns.
So all the work is supposedly being done in a new facility, about a fourteen thousand square foot facility that's being built on the site. They're asking for waivers from setback on two sides from one's fifty foot and one's seventy five foot and a hundred foot's required. Um, and what the proposal is, is they take a truck into the building, the truck demol, um, dumps all the stuff, and then they sort through it and it gets shipped out to various other locations for recycling. And unfortunately, um, a lot of the nearest recycling facilities are um, west of Boston, the the one that comes to mind to me is, there's a huge facility at Fort Devens. So there's a lot of trucking involved. Um, the proposed facility is within um, a wetlands buffer zone, so they're going to have to go to the local conscom for that. Um, the facility is about a half a mile from the Gloucester Manchester line. Um, so as an abutting community, Manchester has the ability to comment. So I think it's a better situation that they're building a bigger building and everything is happening in the building. And if there's any um, liquid refuse that is apparently collected in a tank and then pumped out. Um, so they really are looking at a number of different things, but um, three hundred and fifty tons a day is a lot of waste. So um, anyhow, I'll dig into it a little bit more and I'll draft something up for the board to review.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the exact process is, but how can we respond, not we, the planning board, but the town as the, as a as the town, uh, is is the town positioning to have a cohesive response to those concerns with traffic and um, potential noise and volumes and all that? I guess that's a question to you, Betsy.
Um, they haven't really, in in my review of the application, they haven't really talked about noise. I think because the bulk, they're moving a lot of the activity into a building. Um, traffic is something else, so I mean, it it, I can draft something up and share it with the select board and the planning board and you know, if there needs, need to be additional information, then we can add it.
But officially, this notice came from the Board of Health to us.
Right.
They're the ones asking for our comments.
Right.
So if you want to make this more of a global thing, I but I don't know, we need, if that's necessary, but I think the comments should be to the Board of Health.
Right, but if we want to have a cohesive response with the select board also responding, um, maybe Becky can advise on that, but um, you know.
Let let me, let me ask Becky that question, she's are you.
Hopefully this will work this time. Can you hear me?
Yes, we're all set now.
Okay, um, I I just have a question first, um, we've all been um, forwarded this information, but Mary, may I ask you what you mean by a cohesive response?
Well, I'm just.
We're all individual boards, so what is it you mean unless we all have a group meeting? Um, because as as you've said, uh, we can't deliberate via email, so if I could have a little more information regarding what you mean by cohesive, I think that'd be helpful.
I just mean, or I mean that um, we were sent this notice as a butter, as the town is a butters to this, and so with the town's response, so I don't know if it's common practice that it comes out of the town administrator's office, the select board's office, but I would imagine any residents that are over towards that area, if they would be impacted, they would maybe have a voice to say something. Um, and if it would impact traffic in our town, that we would have a voice as a town.
Um, but again, if I may through you, Ron, um, you you said we as a town with a cohesive response, so I'm still not clear on what you mean by that.
So cohesive means that.
Oh, no, I know what cohesive means, but I'm saying what is your, um, what are you looking for specifically?
I personally am not looking for anything, I threw it out there, if the town responds in a manner that addresses all issues that are discussed either here and inclusive of the Board of Health and inclusive of the Select Board, that would be, to me, a cohesive response, that it's one communication coming from the town of Manchester to Gloucester.
Okay, my understanding is they've reached out to different boards and they're asking for, and again, Ron, through you, please. Um, they've asked the different boards for feedback, so I I I think that that is pretty clear in terms of what they're they're asking.
So let's see what Betsy comes up with for um, a document, and again, we'll we'll respond to the Board of Health who asked us, I think that's all we can do.
There's somebody else who's been. Wendy?
Oh, she's the um, Wendy, Board of Health.
Thank you so much for acknowledging me, Chair, I just wanted to step in and provide.
Tell the board who you are and.
Oh, I apologize, my name is Wendy Hansberry, I'm the Health Director for Manchester by the Sea. And I was the one who sent out the original memo to all of the boards and departments asking for comments. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to um, clarify the the different steps available to people to comment. So currently, the state has the application and it is open for public comment. That means anybody can send in either through email, through the system, um, the online application or uh, you know, send it in through the mail, um, comments, so an individual can, from any town, anybody in Manchester, any board as an individual, as a, as a board group can certainly send in comments during this public comment period. That lasts for, I believe it's sixty days, the clock has already started running, so they've probably already gone through five days or so. After that is closed at the state, there is a review period and then the Gloucester Board of Health holds a public hearing. And it is uh, it it's very clear and and narrow in who can step up and comment during their hearing. The Board of Health is a representative of the Abutter, Town of Manchester. And so the Board of Health can go to the Gloucesters meeting and provide comments. So just to wrap it up, short story long, if you would like to as a board provide your own comments or as individuals provide comments, you can do that now during this sixty day period. Or you can send comments to the Board of Health, and I will coalesce them and put them together as representing Manchester by the sea, make sure there's no duplications, but that each concern from the board is a group can address uh, the Gloucester Board of Health. I also would like to mention that uh, the new director over at the Gloucester Board of Health did say if there are interest groups, I believe you have to have six or more people. Um, you can be an entity and ask to be recognized at the public hearing. So that was, and if that's confusing, I'm happy to give you, you know, the written citation from the state statutes, but I think that's probably more confusing. Thank you.
I don't, I don't want to prolong it, but um, so the town, our Board of Health received this as an Abutter. But the neighbors over on whose land might be abutting, Gloucesters land, would they also receive something?
I assume they did.
Okay.
They.
Probably in the buffers, in the zone, you know.
Uh, unless they're direct to butters, I don't believe, or within, I think it's, was it a five hundred feet, and Betsy might know better, but um, there's also been public notice in the newspaper and hopefully people were notified that way. Uh, but if I've asked it to be put on the um, town's website, so it's, we we have tried to let people know it's there. Thank you.
So I assume that we would just send individual comments to Betsy for coalition? That, I don't know what we want to do, or do we want to um, make a.
Maybe send our individual comments to Wendy, because Betsy is uh,
True.
It takes the, takes it off Betsy's plate.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Fine.
Yes, yeah.
That's what the board would like, send your comments to Wendy. Okay, thank you. Now, the um, MBTA Community Multi-Family Zoning District, Section Three A, like to get an update from the task force members. I put a bunch of items on the agenda that uh, I thought were highlighting of things that have gone on in the past three or four weeks, but uh, I think if you guys can just praise the the board of what's going on and maybe have, the board will have some questions. Want to start this.
Sure, so um, there are four of us here from the MBTA Task Force, which is great.
Um, Sarah.
Oh, and Sarah online, that's right. Uh, so here's what's happening, um. We've undertaken a number of things over the past couple of months, first is we adopted admission statement and put it on our website, so everybody knows what we're doing. We've discussed zoning strategies and zoning bylaws and how they work. Uh, we've created three subcommittees who are actively working right now. One of them is um, concentrating on community engagement. One is uh, working on zoning language and specific zoning ideas for how to implement the program. And one which really is just getting started is on design guidelines. Uh, we have adopted a community outreach plan, which is also on the website. Um, we, our last most recent meeting, we had a presentation from Greg Fenderspiel about the consequences of non-compliance. And he uh, provided us a list of grants that we've received over the past ten years, uh, which would be affected if we did not comply with uh, the zoning mandate, and also a preview of what we're applying for now that would be affected. So over the past ten years, we've uh, from these funding sources, we have averaged about five hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars per year, uh, that those funds would be at risk. Of course, that's in the past, so technically they're not at risk. But what is at risk is eight million dollars of identified grants over the next three to four years, which includes um, the Rotunda Project, additional dredging of the harbor uh, and um, uh, an infrastructure grant for helping cell signaling with their infrastructure requirements. And finally, and probably the biggest risk to the town is that uh, we would be at risk for being sued by the Attorney General. That would require us to come up with a legal defense and the cost of that. And the ultimate risk is that uh, court might find uh, that non-compliance requires the state to impose zoning on us, which they could do, they, you know, they law defines zoning and authorizes it, so that let the state give us, the state could take us away. Uh, the next thing that's going to be happening is uh, there's a request for proposals that Betsy has put out for a consultant be hired hopefully by mid to late October, and we'll start uh, analyzing some of the data, uh, using the state model for how to comply with the zoning mandate. And in anticipation of that, there are, there's a group of people who are collecting data on existing housing to create a baseline. Um, this is complicated because the assessor uh, provides, does an inventory of properties for tax assessment, but not necessarily for a housing inventory, so there are some discrepancies between what the, we think is housing and what the assessor thinks is housing. Uh, but we do know that in the general district, there are about five hundred existing units. And in the radius of a half a mile from the train station, there are over nine hundred residential units. So we do know that is a source at the moment. Our next meeting is October twelfth, and at that meeting, we'll be discussing what a fifteen unit per acre zoning would look like on the ground, uh, which would be something similar to probably like what's at Twelve Summer Street. Um, there's going to be a community outreach program event on Saturday, October fourteenth, and details of that are being worked out. Um, and then one final thing, I put together a list of questions that the uh, that the task force is going to be having to answer over the next several months, which includes whether we're going to just tinker, for example, with the general district, or do we want to create additional districts? Um, do we want to impose some sort of requirement that there be retail of the first floor buildings in the downtown to protect the commercial uses? Uh, I think would be obviously in support of a demolition delay. to help us cope with potential development pressure as this goes on. There are just a whole list of questions. I go through all of them if you like, but they'll be posted on our website as well. And I think my fellow task force members can add other comments if they would like. This would be good time.
I guess my only comment is it's incredibly complicated.
Thank you, Danny.
Earlier today, and there's, I think, some differences of opinion as to how to attack it. But there was no consensus, and there's no easy solution. And it's going to require, I think, a lot more thought and a lot more parsing through what options might be available and what the consequences are. Because in the long fall, in the long term, we don't do a good job at this. And maybe even if we do a good job at this, speaking personally, I think the character of the town is at risk. And so I think it's terribly important that we do a thorough and comprehensive job to minimize the potential negative impact of a well-meaning law that doesn't fit the town of Manchester.
Yeah, the thing I would add to what Danny just said is that I think probably every single member of the task force is well aware of the potential difficulty and consequences for the town. And so there's been a proliferation, really, of meetings to discuss ideas and try and thrash things out, and really get our arms around what could possibly be a solution. And also, beginning to think about how to advocate for the town and its unique geography and all of that, to get some exceptions perhaps from the state.
So with that in mind, there's a lot of work to do, and there's really little time, I think. We're shooting for November, Special Town Meeting 2024. Is that kind of when, what you guys are shooting for?
Yes, yes.
So I think we need to back up, you know, from that date, you know, public hearings, presentation to the planning board, you know. So it's got to be some urgency in doing this, so it's, I think we should come up with some kind of draft schedule of goals going forward.
We have a draft schedule, which will be, well, actually, there's one sort of posted on the website now, it will be a much more specific one. Meeting dates of all the subcommittees and the task force itself, and engagement with the planning board.
Yeah, that end process has got to kind of-
Sure, that's right.
Don't want to be rushing this particular bylaw change. Any comments to the task force from the Board, Mary?
I, yeah, so I'm looking at this work schedule. So the way I've looked at this is it's a task that the task force is doing, and then you pass it off to the planning board. And I just want to know that date that it gets passed off to the planning board, and then we do what we need to do with it. I didn't see that here.
Right, that part of the schedule needs to be worked out.
Yeah, okay.
I agree. Haven't seen that. Any other comments from the Board?
I have lots of comments, actually. All right, so I, all right, first off, I think everyone knows, it's not a surprise, that I was not a fan of this task force. No surprise. So we have been asking for data for months. We have received no data. I reached out to Betsy. She said, "My town planner's report is going to have an explanation of why there's no data." I still don't have any data, and I didn't see an explanation. So I think it's fascinating that we're going to have a town forum on the 12-14th, but the planning board still doesn't have any data, right? I've listened to the meetings. They talk about data, but the planning board has no data.
Yeah, what do you want to do with the data?
I want to look at it.
And?
It doesn't really matter what I want to do. I want to see it. It's our job. We're the zoning board. We're the land use board, right? So is my right to see the data, right? You can't deny me that right. Two, I do have this problem with the subcommittee applying for a grant, or the town applying for a grant. With the language of zoning, the planning board never saw this grant application, and we have no part of choosing a consultant. I believe, in my opinion, that this could be a violation of the municipal finance law. I see this as correlating to the DPW. You know, we apply for a water main grant, and we're going to go talk to a consultant about replacing a water- we have no business, right? This subcommittee, in my opinion, has no authority to do this work. They have the authority through us, which they haven't done. Their charge was not done by us. They kind of, on their own, making their own, their own design, what they're ever going to do, and then they're going to come back to us, and we're going to say, "Okay, that was good." But we've had no input, even on the mission. So, and again, all right. Last Thursday, there was a meeting. And at approximately 48 minutes into the meeting, I was horrified. I was I really actually couldn't believe what I heard. One person on the board started the conversation and said, "You know, we're trying to keep this zoning downtown and away from single-family districts." The conversation then went on to say, "And Smith Point, and Spy Rock Hill, and Tuck's Point." This board, every board member was there. Everyone in this room was there. Our town administrator was there, our town planner was there, Bingcom, ZBA Chair. Not one person spoke up and said that language was inappropriate. This is NIMBY language at its best. And I really have a problem with going forward with this task force, and they actually repeated the language again this morning. This NIMBY language has got to stop.
What NIMBY language are you talking about?
I just told you.
No, you didn't tell us.
"Don't, don't zone. This zone is not appropriate for Smith Point." "This zoning is not appropriate for Spy Rock Hill." "This zoning is not appropriate for Tuck's Point." Those were three sentences from three board members last Thursday.
I'm sorry, but there was a discussion about, well, I know we're going to go back and forth here. I'm sorry.
I'm asking, the town council review that at 48 minutes and give us a recommendation on what to do with this. This language is inappropriate. The conversation about having a meeting on the 14th as a public forum, there's no clear message. Every meeting that I've listened to, every correspondence that I've received, the state website says that we need to zone for 585 units. Correspondence today from Betsy says 555. Our ZBA Chair can't read the bylaw to tell us whether how many parking spaces are required. There's a problem with this task force not coming back to the planning board, who is going to ask the town to vote on this for clarification. We have a massive problem here. This is not acceptable.
Any other comments?
Since Mrs. Delicio would like to have things pointed out that are not correct, I do think we have to say that Greg Fetterspiel came to us with a recommendation for task force. There was a charge for the task force. We voted it at this board. So the Board did vote to endorse the task force. I applaud them. But to just, to sort of follow up on her people being silent, I just want to be clear that we voted to, there was a, I can find it if I look, but we voted with, to accept the town administrator's recommendation, and I think we've been, we are partnering. This is not just a planning board issue. This is a town-wide issue. And the select board has appointed people. We are well represented with strong members, people attend regularly. I was not at that last meeting, just, but whatever. So I think, just to correct, that certainly Christine is welcome to, and has certainly made clear that she disagrees with the task force as a method, but it was voted by this board, so.
Yes, it was. But we did not vote on a charge at the board. They just created their own charge. So let's be very clear. They created their own charge. There's no affordable component. The language is NIMBY. And I don't believe-
Stop making misstatements like that. That's ridiculous.
Would you like me to play it?
Yeah, play it, please. This is unconscionable.
Forty-eight minutes, the first eight minutes.
Let's not have any back. Let's have, let's go through the chair if you want to make a comment. Now, you made a comment. Now, Chris, do you have any comments on?
Actually, I don't have any comments. I just think this is outrageous to have these kinds of misstatements made.
This is Sarah Melish. I have a comment.
Sarah, go ahead.
I am absolutely, totally insulted, Christina. We are working as a board, as a task force, in a free-form matter to discuss the issues and try to come up with possible solutions. This is not black and white. We need to be able to have free-form discussions without you saying that we don't know what we're doing. And I am absolutely, totally insulted by that. And I'm sorry. You know, we're volunteers, and I don't think the planning board could do any better. I'm sorry. Thanks.
We are ultimately responsible for this task force, and I-
We'll have our say at some point.
Well, we haven't yet. When is that, Ron?
We're trying to get a schedule.
We're supposed to regularly meet.
That's your opinion.
No, it's not.
I just, I just wanted to refer, Christine, there is, there's plenty of data. And you can just go on the town's GIS website, and one of the members of the task force has been doing that and analyzing the data and working on it. So if you want access to the data, it already exists. So I'm not sure what the people is doing.
I've asked for correspondence. I've asked for anything that Betsy has given to you, that the planning board be CC'd. We've been CC'd on nothing. So you're telling me Betsy's never sent you an email?
No, I'm saying for data. If you are interested in data-
I'm interested in all. If we're going to be ultimately responsible for this.
Excuse me. Let me finish, please. If you're interested in data, which is what you said, that was your opening first point, then the data is readily available to any citizen who wants to download it and analyze it. So if that's your first concern, and it's a reasonable and valid concern, it is available.
Okay, I would like to respond, Ron. Our town planner said that she was going to have this data for us months ago. So we pay someone a lot of money to analyze this data and provide it. It still has not been provided, which we were told it was going to be available months ago. So I can do it, but I am a volunteer, and we actually pay someone to do it. So my expectation is if we pay someone to do it, we should receive the information.
Mr. Chairman?
Becky, you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order. And then we went to the town training, and we're going to talk about people's reputation, character, or professional competence. It has to be an executive session.
I don't think this was competence. This was-
If you are insinuating things about town employee, it should be done in executive session.
Not-
Yeah, you did. You did. Said something about Betsy Ware being paid.
It's not an innuendo. She said at a public meeting that she would provide us the information.
I mean-
It should be, it is state law that we're talking about employees' competence. It needs to be in executive session.
It's not competence. This is not competence.
Well, several members felt that's what it was interpreted. Becky, you have a comment?
I do. There was some data put in on the SharePoint of multifamily housing in some of the downtown area. I cannot invent data, Christina. The assessor's office has some glitches, and I'm trying to work with them so that accurate data gets put out as opposed to inaccurate data. I also addressed it in my staff memo. So that's what you get right now until I can get the assessor's office to generate accurate data.
Dakes, you have a comment? You have your hand up? Maybe not. Okay, any other comments on the update? Look forward to your session.
Thank you for your hard work.
Appreciate all of the task force is doing. Got a hard job. Moving on to Liaison Committees, Task Force Working Groups, Senior Housing Bylaw. Excuse me, do you have a question?
May I make one more comment about the task force? One of the things that has been a pleasure, working as a part of the task force, has been mutual respect, the back and forth, the attempt to discover solutions, even though we don't always agree. And I am happy to be part of it for that reason.
I appreciate your service. Thank you. Okay, Liaison Committees, let's start with the Senior Housing Bylaw. I know there was a lot of emails on that.
We were supposed to meet on the 15th, and we decided to, a couple of us had a conflict. The person was out of town, and given the move to not have a November time meeting, we were going to meet last Friday, and I failed to convey that to Gail, so it was not posted, so we did not meet. So we need to find another time.
Okay, I think you guys are fishing for one right now, right? I thought I saw some correspondence on the- Mary?
So I, just to let people know, and I have notes. I met with two women from the state, the LIP Director and the LIP Coordinator. So I had a conference call with them on September 14th to go over senior housing bylaw and the affordability component with that. They were extremely helpful, extremely nice. And these are the notes. I can go over them. People can just read them if they want. They are willing to speak with the Board, so we can get further clarity if we have more questions. I said I would pose that to the Board and get back to them if they wanted to meet or not meet. But again, they obviously had the clear answers with how we can get a stronger affordability component in the senior housing bylaw and just the requirements with that. They did strongly suggest that we research what is needed in our community. They gave me a few examples of communities that went ahead and built large senior housing complexes, and then found out that nobody in the community really was moving into them. And so they recommend to communities that they do the research. Surveys are good, they said, because again, they get the scenarios where, you know, it sounds good to say people want to downsize and stay in the community, but what they find out is the scale is not always to what people think or build. And then there's obviously asset limit requirements that if you have over the $275,000, you're not going to qualify then for the affordable pieces. So anyway, just lots of good information. They were very helpful, sent me some other documents, and I think it'd be helpful with the bylaw.
Thank you for that research.
So is it something that the Board would like to have them come in and speak, or not come in, but, you know?
I think, I think that was a good idea when we're ready for this.
Or the subcommittee.
Subcommittee can make that decision, then bump it up to us.
Sure.
Okay. Anything on the harbor management plan advisory?
No. It's now that the committee, and people need to get sworn in. Very exciting next step.
Very exciting next step.
Hey, um on the CPC, we're having our annual public hearing on September twenty-eighth, which is Thursday. It's an open public hearing. Purposes to open the new fiscal year's brands application season and discuss the CPA's mission as laid out in the CPC's five-year plan. So we'll be meeting on Thursday. Any other liaison or uh, committee reports?
Yes, Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, we met with the Housing Authority and the uh, one developer who responded to the request for qualifications that was issued last month. Or I'm sorry, in uh, August. And uh, the, the developer who responded is a nonprofit called Preservation of Affordable Housing, RPOA. They're based in Boston. They have a national presence. They're very good developers. Uh, at the meeting, we discussed uh, the problems with Newport Park and the Plains, and they have done projects like this. Um, and they, to make the numbers work typically for this kind of renovation where there's a state subsidy uh, for public housing. To, to make the numbers work, you typically need a one-to-one ratio of new units to existing units to be able to carry the subsidy forward. So they suggested uh, finding another site where affordable housing could be built as part of the project. Uh, and there are some candidates, um, and there's also the possibility of uh, additional density on the existing sites to get somewhere along the way there. Uh, and at that point, uh, actually Christina asked a couple of media's ago about it's a proposal for a land swap with Newport Park. And in fact, Steve Gang attended the meeting and he did submit the idea of a trade of land on a one-for-one basis of Newport Park for some other land in the Powder House reservation, which would protect some of the wetlands and uh, ease project development costs at Newport Park. Uh, both the Housing Authority and the Affordable Housing Trust said that might be a very good idea for him to proceed with to see what would be involved in making the swap. And he said he'd get back to us if he'd done some research, so. Um, so that is on the table now.
Okay, thanks for the update. Any comments on that? Um, any other liaison?
Well, the um
FinCom?
FinCom that, but with the um FinCom and Select Board and School Committee and all of those boards and with Essex to go over the preliminary school budget, um, not all the school budget, but talk about um the school formula between the two towns, and there was a lot of discussion and back and forth, but nothing, nothing great.
Okay. Other committees? Okay, approval of regular minutes. There were none, but we did get a rules and regulations subcommittee minutes. Um, those who attended, I guess you would need to get a uh approval.
Yeah, I do.
Motion to approve those minutes from that committee?
I, I haven't uh, read them yet, so I
You weren't there. No, he was there according to minutes.
So is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mary's second.
My second.
All those in favor? Okay, simple. All right, with uh, nothing else on the agenda, I make a motion to adjourn for tonight.
So
All those in favor? Thank you all.